Just. Make sure everyone's here that is committed. By committed, I mean to speaking, not to our club. You're all committed. And I thank you for that. Um, hi, Ms. Hammy. Um.
How you doing?
I'm doing well, thanks.
Right.
So we're very excited tonight. Um, we are gonna have our school board forum. Uh, the three people who are going to be speaking, who are running are all CCDU members. So welcome. I'm gonna turn it over to Daryl Menthee in a second, who is our VP of endorsements. But one pretty cool thing, I just came across. Our vice mayor just posted online that the uh Culver City Robotics Team, the high school's robotics team. Their robot is gonna be throwing out the first pitch on Thursday afternoon at Dodger Stadium against the Giants. So that is unbelievably cool. So figure I'd lead us off uh with some news. I know nothing else has been going on in the news, so I figured I'd lead us off with that. Um, with that, I will turn it over to you, Daryl. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Well, I'm glad everyone is here. Uh, thank you for uh volunteering to be here for our special meeting. Uh, this is our special meeting to deal with school board candidates for Culver City Unified School District. We submitted questionnaires to all of our uh potential candidates. Uh, to four of them that we knew of, three responded with uh complete responses to the questionnaires. Those three candidates were invited to come speak today. They are in a no particular order, Kristen Cruz, Andrew Lockman, and Lindsay Carlson. Uh, and uh, those are the three candidates who will be on the ballot when you receive it tomorrow morning. Uh, so um, I told the candidates that we would have a completely random process for picking their order. And since there's three of them, you know, it's not gonna be the most, the biggest surprise in the world, but I literally have a hat. Uh, and let me tell you before I pick the names out of the hat. Um, what we've done is we've asked the candidates to come to speak for up to five minutes. There'll be a timer. And just to speak about themselves, about their vision, about what they want to do. This is sort of free time. Uh, we did this uh for uh district attorney uh when we did that in November. And I thought it was just a wonderful experience to get to listen to the candidates just speak in a way they don't usually get to with a timer on Zoom. Uh, so um, we're gonna do that. Then we're gonna have a short question answer session. I will remind you, these quite, these uh uh candidates spent a lot of time uh filling out our questionnaire. And there are a lot of detailed answers that are available, and they've all been emailed to you. So we're hoping the Q and A doesn't replicate that. Uh, also hoping we have some good solid questions that come out of that, that all the candidates can answer. And we'll keep that to about fifteen minutes, make, and then we will move on to uh uh a discussion, because I think it is important that we have that discussion about the extraordinary thing that has happened to national politics in our party over the weekend. Uh, and that is, of course, that the sitting president uh has chosen not to run for reelection at this amazingly late date. Uh, so without further ado, I am picking, literally picking names out of a hat. To be fair, I'm picking pieces of paper that have letters on them out of a hat, but the letters associated with people. So the first one is Okay, so Kristen, if you are here, you are up.
Okay, hi, thank you.
We spotlight the speaker, please.
I'm on, I'm unmuted.
Yes.
Um, hi, everyone. Thank you. Um, as Daryl said, my name is Kristen Cruz. Uh, I know you have the questionnaire, but a little bit about myself, for those of you who haven't had a chance to read it yet. Um, my career has been in operations, serving youth in communities. Uh, I have worked for big companies like the Walt Disney Company and the Wonderful Company, as well as the Department of Public Health. Um, I currently work on developing a software to help measure and track social impact metrics um for a small consulting firm. Um, and prior to, and then I went to grad school um earlier on, where I got a master's in urban planning and my MBA from UCLA. And prior to that, I was actually in the education space first and finance at UCLA. And then in operations for an SAT prep company. Um, and I was even, I kind of share this with people jokingly. I was even avid tutor at Culver City Middle School and High School for a year. Um, deciding whether or not I wanted to be a teacher. Um, obviously, with what I've just shared, I did not go down that path. Um, but I've also served on the board of two well-regarded nonprofits, Girls on the Run Los Angeles and Playworks Southern California. And both of these nonprofits work to help youth on their emotional and um social and physical well-being. Um, and I share all of this essentially because I want to show that my um my focus on the youth has been genuine and has been over the last two decades that I have been navigating um and building a career in this space. And it has always been focused in the operations and the strategy side. Um, I'm running for school board at this time because I believe our district is at a point where um, we could focus and should focus more on operations. And I know in past years, maybe that wasn't the right thing. Um, but right now, at this point in time, as we've seen um with Measure E, that there should be a focus on the procedures and efficiencies. Um, I know we've had issues with like the length of time uh to get someone hired with a bad lack of maintenance. Um, and I believe that we have a diverse board, which is really important. But it's also really important to bring people onto the board to meet the the needs um of the district at that time. And so I am, I'm running because I think that having someone with an operational focus who has been also um in the youth space and you know, that's kind of always will be my my lens in which I'm making every decision is how is this benefiting the students? Um, having that is important um this year and for this race. Um, so that's kind of my my quick intro. Uh, I look forward to your questions and thank you.
Well, thank you very much. As I did mention, I did tell the candidates that they are in no way required to use all of the time they are. Are possibly a lot.
Sorry, I thought I didn't have a timer and I did an endorsement this morning. That's supposed to be ten minutes and it went twenty, so I'm totally all over.
Oh, the ti- the timer should have been on my face. Uh, uh, and if it's, you can't see it, let me know.
Staring at myself focused.
Um, no worries. Um, okay. So um, if you're assuming you're done with your time, then?
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure more will happen through the questions, yes.
All right, that sounds good. Um, let's go pick our next speaker completely randomly out of the two. It is, that is an A for Andrew, Mr. Lockman.
Hi.
It's, it's uh.
Good to see everyone. It's been an interesting twenty-four hours.
Can we get him spotlighted, please?
There you go.
I was just gonna say, Daryl, I don't see the timer on your show. Oh, now I see it.
There it is. Uh, it's been interesting twenty-four hours. I was up dropping my daughter off at camp yesterday when all of this was going down. And so interspersed with uh making sure that everything was okay with her first trip to sleepaway camp. Uh, I was dealing with uh my fellow DNC members uh trying to make sure that uh we're all uh communicating with each other over these changes and uh supporting our vice president. Uh, which uh a majority of delegates seem to have done as of today. So very exciting uh times. Um, uh, but a little bit crazy. Many of you know me. Uh, my name is Andrew Lackman. I am uh running for school board uh here, not just because I'm Jewish and I love suffering. Um, but um, I I suppose there are many groups that feel that way about community service uh as well. But I, because I just feel like we're putting too much focus and we're distracted by the politics and personalities and not focusing on our kids and our educators, which is why we're all here. This, in theory, should be a position that's we, something where we all are coming together to stand behind our schools. Much like we did when we put together the Culver City Compact many years ago. So uh, my own background, uh, very quickly, I'm a parent of a sixth grader. Um, so uh of all the candidates running, I have probably the most depth of experience. Um, having uh been involved with my daughter's education at El Marino and the Spanish program. Uh, my daughter also has learning disabilities, and so uh I have found a wonderful community that I've gotten to work with with that as well. I've also been active with this, with the schools for a while. I served briefly on the Education Foundation Board. Had to, of course, uh step off uh when I ran for school board. Uh, but I've been doing work particularly around trying to put together an equity fund for uh our schools that don't have strong booster programs. Uh, I served on the Equity Advisory Committee because I felt it was important to have a Jewish community voice as a part of the equity discussion. As you know, uh, sometimes we get left out, and as a result, uh, it hasn't always been particularly good for us. Um, served on the LCAP PAC Committee as well as the Bond Oversight Committee. Professionally, I'm a business lawyer. Um, I work with Boards of Directors. Uh, and also have a background in ethics and contracts, particularly public contracting, which has been an issue, as you know, as of lately. I was Legislative Director for Poli- uh for Congressman Ted Lieu and also Consultant for the Joint Committee on the Arts. So I also have a policy background and operations background and a legal background. Uh, I've served on the Board of Temple Akiba as the Director of Leadership Development, been a proud member of the Exchange Club. And dealt with finance issues uh as the Chair of the Culver City Finance Advisory Committee. Uh, I am, of course, very proud to have been endorsed by Culver City Federation of Teachers. Uh, Vice Mayor Dan O'Brien, Ted Lieu, uh former Culver City um uh uh School Board Chairs. Uh, Marla Wolkowitz, Bob Knopf, Scott Seidman, uh and Stuart Bubar, as well as former mayors, uh Wolkowitz, Clark, and Weissman. Uh, and uh over and have support from over two hundred uh residents, uh parents and 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 whatnot. Um, I I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing your questions. Uh, I'll try to be careful about the ones on math. That was never my big subject, except for budgets, of course, which I know very well. Um, but you know, we can talk a lot uh about what we can do in order to make sure that um you know, that we're focusing our spending in the classroom. Uh, that we are offering programs that challenge our students and that we're investing in those students who are at risk. We need the support uh in order to overcome systemic or uh or other structural barriers. Uh, and of course, we can also uh talk a little bit about how we take on and make sure that everyone is being included, not just from a uh neurodivergent disabilities perspective, but also making sure that all of our communities and all of our students feel safe and challenged, uh no matter how they learn and where they come from. Thank you very much. Look forward to hearing more.
Well, thank you very much. Um, and uh appreciate that. Someone just asked their press for a process for submitting questions. Yes. Uh, put them in the chat uh to me if you can. Uh, we'll be dealing with that afterward. Uh, so uh, our final uh candidate we'll be hearing from today is Lindsay Carlson. And uh, Lindsay, the floor is yours.
Hey, thanks, Daryl. Um, good evening, everybody. I'm Lindsay Carlson. I'm a Culver City resident of ten years and a mom of a six-year-old who attends El Marino in the Japanese immersion program. I really appreciate this opportunity to seek endorsement from Culver City Democrats United, and I really hope to have your support. Um, I mentioned in my questionnaire that I'm a co-founder and have served as the president of another democratic club, Heart of LA, for the past seven years. In that capacity, I've had a great opportunity to get to know many members of the Culver City community, including my ride or die, Janine Waznaski-Stalin, who's another co-founder and has been on the board since the beginning. Um, as well as Kim Griffin, Denise Renteria, Anna Laird, Kathy Pespallis, who have also been members of our Heart of LA Board over the years. Um, so I know that the work of running a democratic club is much more than it looks like from the outside, and it's so often thankless. So I just wanted to thank you all, especially the board members, for stepping up and doing it and participating. I also wanted to thank you all for your endorsement of me for the LACDP Central Committee this spring. Uh, while I didn't finish in the top seven, uh I'm now serving as the alternate for our delegation chair, Ms. Rosa Russell. Um, so I'm serving, or sorry, excuse me, I'm running for Culver City School Board for two main reasons. First, to restore trust between district stakeholders, and that's the community, our educators, our district management, and the school board. And second, to improve management of the district, including using the skills that I have as a lawyer and a manager of people and projects. Um, I grew up in Minnesota as the daughter of a public high school teacher and a mechanical engineer. I'm actually out there visiting right now. It's about nine fifteen in the evening uh for me. Um, I moved out to California when I was twenty-one to attend law school at UCLA. And with the exception of a year when I went back to Minnesota to clerk for the Minnesota Supreme Court Justice, Paul Anderson. I've lived and practiced law in Los Angeles for the past twenty years. For the first fourteen years of that, I was a litigator at a large law firm, actually multiple large law firms, and I won every case that I tried. Uh, not long after having my son, I moved to an in-house position with my current firm, Latham Watkins, where I oversee a team of attorneys who handle a variety of information governance issues and ensure the firm's management of information meets applicable legal, ethical, security, and privacy requirements everywhere that it operates around the world. I also serve on the Board of the National Association of Women Lawyers, and tomorrow I'll actually be heading from here in the Twin Cities down to Chicago for our annual meeting. I'm really excited that Stacy Abrams is gonna be our keynote speaker on Thursday at lunch. I became involved in CCUSD schools the moment that my son started TK in the fall of twenty twenty-two. My first action was joining the Elrond Consite Council, on which I served during the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three school year. When my son transferred to El Marino in twenty twenty-three, I joined the PTA and started attending meetings there and then became part of the PTA's nominating committee to recruit and assemble a proposed slate of twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five officers. So as some of you may know, I've been organizing with a group of parents and community members over the past couple of years to bring much-needed change to the school district. In particular, I was instrumental in bringing to light certain matters of noncompliance, including with respect to improper closed-session meetings and unethical behavior by certain current board members. Um, along with my fellow organizers, we've pushed for concrete and meaningful action to improve our local schools. And we've really set the district on a course towards significant improvement. Those of you who've been following along in the CCUSD Families for Excellence and Accountability Facebook group have no doubt seen the great results that the group has achieved. And to those of you who have picked up an aura and helped us row, thank you. Really appreciate that. Uh, honored to have the endorsements of the Culver City Federation of Teachers and elected officials like Representatives Ted Lieu and Angie Craig and LA City Attorney Heidi Feldstein-Soto. I'm also backed by over a hundred Culver City community members and counting, who've offered me their affirmative support. You can find them on my website. And many of them are current CCUSD parents and folks who have not been previously involved in our local politics. Finally, I'm also the only candidate in this race with endorsements from three sitting city council members, Dan O'Brien, Joren Erickson, and Albert Vera. Because I believe that the district needs good partners on the city council, I've also endorsed Councilwoman Rivera in his reelection bid, as well as two other CCDU-endorsed candidates, Denise Renteria, Janine Waznaski-Stalin, and made the maximum financial contribution to each of them. As I said in my questionnaire, I don't just ask, or sorry, I don't just talk, I do. There's a lot to be said about trust, who's earned it, who's broken it, and um who has never earned it in the first place. And I'm a person that you can trust to consistently show up, do the work, be honest with everyone regarding both our strengths and our weaknesses, truly care about both the near and the long-term success of our schools and the district, and be transparent and confident where I stand. I'd be honored to have your endorsement, and I look forward to answering your questions tonight. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you so much. Um, and let's do a little round of applause to all of the candidates, because it is a big deal to show up anytime. Uh, so clap, everybody. There's always a good big deal. It i- it is a big deal when you show up and put yourself on the line in front of your community and say you wanna make things better at your schools or anywhere else. So uh, it's an honor to hear from all of you. And um so I have some questions that are being sent to me. We will have time for some, not all. Now, let me start with one uh that a couple people have asked, and that has to do with Measure K. Uh, Measure K was a hundred eighty-nine dollar per parcel tax. It'll be expiring relatively soon. Uh, one of the options under consideration is to renew it where at at levels between one hundred eighty-nine up to two hundred fifty dollars. Uh, and that election may take place fairly soon. Uh, candidate, the person is asking, with candidates, please tell us where they stand on the renewal of the parcel tax and perhaps at what level? And uh, since we started with Kristen last time, we're gonna start with Andrew this time. There's no time limit. You're, you're, you're muted. No, no, no real time limit, but but I'll have to impose one if if you all talk as long as I do.
Okay. Cool. Um, no, uh, I think, I I hope I speak in all of us and wanting to support Measure K. Um, um, uh, as to the level, uh, I I could see it being increased to keep track with inflation, perhaps. Uh, but that's it. I I the, it was supposed to be spent on uh on positions and teachers as well as technology. Uh, previously, it was written a little vaguely. Uh, I would like to see it tightened up and making sure that we're spending more uh on teachers uh and salaries and and the personnel in our schools, particularly around arts education. As I mentioned, uh, I was the consultant for the Joint Committee on the Arts, and frankly, um what we have here in the school district for its dedication to arts education uh is something that makes it particularly special. Uh, and that's how I first came to discover Culver City back in two thousand and ten. Uh, we first ended up, uh, two thousand and nine, when I was working, and we did a hearing here and ended up loving it so much that we ended up moving here and in two thousand and ten. Uh, uh, although we were out for a couple of years when I was working for Ted Lieu and some other stuff as well. Um, but this is our home, and uh as a parent, I wanna see start strong education, arts education programs. I wanna see money spent on technology in our schools keeping us up to date. Um, and we can build on that, of course, by building stronger partnerships with our uh businesses that we have here. We have so many great tech companies here that we should be doing more to work with. And and also a stronger relationship with Culver City, as well as the one person here who has experience working on uh and in uh Culver City Government, as well as a commissioner. Uh, you know, the opportunity for us to share and capitalize on those resources uh has fallen a little bit by the wayside, and I think we can do more as well on that and raising revenue. But it's gonna take all of those pieces to to make, uh, make sure that our schools are well-funded uh and Measure K, or it's whatever the new one is going to be called after this, uh, needs to be a part of it. But there are some fixes that definitely need to be made and some improvements.
All right, thank you. And now um, we have, sorry. Well, next will be a question, please. Question to you about Measure K renewal, and do you support it? And if so, what level would you support it at?
Um, I also support it. I was at a um CEBAC meeting, and it was kind of made very clear that our schools would be um really hurting, and our students would be really hurting if this doesn't pass again. So I am all for it. I am all for it at the level that it was in the past. And like Andrew, I agree that there's a a measure of inflation, but I don't necessarily think that we have the trust at this point to ask for more without some sort of blueprint. Um, so I'm hoping that there is that um as part of the ask. And um, if the work is done and it's demonstrated to the community, I would also support it being higher because there is a need. Um, but I think that we have to, we need to show and do the work a little bit more before we just ask the community to to support something again without official plans.
Okay, and uh, Lindsay?
Sure, um, probably wouldn't be much of a surprise when I'm also for renewing it. Um, at this point, uh, our current staffing levels are just dependent on having this this money in the district. Um, you know, we would be hurting a great deal from the sort of services and programs that the district has come to um provide to our community and and what we tend to expect at this point without Measure K. So um, I know we've had a lot of issues with oversight in the last few years. The community's really spoken up a lot about that. Um, particularly Carolyn LaBooser, uh, who's been le- leading the charge through state CCUSD. I definitely appreciate all her work on that, as well as a number of the other parents who've been um bringing to light these issues and going to school board meetings and challenging the expenditures. Um, particularly those that have been uh sent over to the Measure K budget. Um, I think also, you know, the Measure K Committee as well, the uh Oversight Committee has had some challenges with respect to meeting and keeping a quorum and, you know, needing to replace some folks on there. You know, one of the things that I'm hoping to do as a board member is to increase uh and improve the relationships between our advisory committees and the board itself and make sure that, you know, we have some really highly qualified, interested people on those committees and that they're feeling heard when they bring up issues. Um, you know, that's, that's super important. Uh, as far as the exact level that we need to renew it at, I don't know if we would need to do it at the current level or a higher level at this point in time. I'm certainly not uh familiar with, you know, the the ins and outs of exactly what our needs are at this point. I don't have that kind of level of um insight into the district budget. But I think one of the things that we definitely should be doing is polling the community and determining what level the community will tolerate. Um, certainly with respect to the Measure E issues, the bond issues. Um, we learned the community is clearly upset with this current board. I mean, that bond should have passed by, you know, eighty, eighty-five percent, given the current makeup of Culver City and, you know, people's support for a local public education, but it barely cleared sixty percent. Um, I served on the uh Bond Feasibility Committee, went to both of the meetings. You know, the first meeting was extremely uh fraught and angry, and a lot of parents showed up, um, and, you know, were really upset. The second meeting, you know, they, um, just to be quite frank, the room was stacked at that point. Um, for people that supported the bond, and, you know, I continued raising issues at that point in time with respect to community trust. Um, and it's really no surprise to me that, you know, we had some challenges. And I think honestly, with respect to Measure E, reasonable minds can differ. You know, I think all of us are in this to do right by our children and right by our community, and people may have a different approach to that. And I ended up supporting it in the end, but I certainly was very critical of a lot of the pro Measure E campaigning and trying to hold them accountable, even while I was supportive of it. Um, but any event, I, getting back to the Measure K issue, I think we do actually need to renew it. We just need to figure out what the right level is for that.
Well, uh, all right, thank you, and thanks to everybody on that question. Uh, I I love doing this uh free form and freestyle with no limits, but uh that's that, that's gonna be amazing for all of us. So second question, we got, I've got, I've got four questions. We've done one. And I think I'm gonna keep it to four, given our timeline, so we'll go through those.
I love four questions.
We'll do it that way. Uh, ah, indeed, yes. The second question has to do with with the school, the existing school board. Um, a number of people have asked in the chat questions that more or less point to this. You have an existing school board. Uh, if you are elected, there are three members of the school board already uh who will continue that you will need to serve with. Uh, which of any of the school board members do you feel that you are aligned with politically? And which ones do you expect support from politically? And we'll start uh with uh Lindsay on this one.
Boy, that's a difficult question. Um, who I'm aligned with politically? I mean, I think, you know, all of them are Democrats, and we're all Democrats. So like in a sort of, you know, like politics writ large, I think, you know, we're probably aligned on a decent amount of issues, but with respect to the district particularly. Um, I think it's really more of a competence issue than it is uh specifically an ideology issue. But I think out of all of the board members, you know, I've had the best relationship with Brian Guerrero. I think that, you know, we've been able to speak honestly to each other. I respect his experience as a teacher. And I know that he's definitely, you know, taken some of my input um on various issues. Um, I don't really have much of a relationship with the others. I did meet with Stephanie Loretto. Um, you know, we had a nice conversation. Um, but at this point, I haven't asked any of them for endorsement. Um, none of them have specifically offered it to me at this point, but I think I could theoretically work with, you know, any of the three that remain, um, if it were necessary to do so.
Thank you. Next one, um, uh, Andrew?
Yeah, it's, it's really important. You, you have to get to three. If you can't get to three, then you're not gonna be able to get things passed. And one of the things that I've been proud of is is my ability to be able to pull people together from various backgrounds and find common ground, even if we may dissipate, disagree on some fundamentals of issues. Um, I've, you know, like Lindsay, I've had a really good relationship with Brian Guerrero. Uh, we, you know, we, we talk pretty often and share ideas, and uh I have found him a wonderful resource and someone who I can work with. Uh, I'm, you know, I've worked very closely with uh, and, you know, with Tristan when it comes to issues around the Jewish community. Uh, I introduced him to the Jewish Federation. He went to Israel and has been willing to speak out. Um, you know, in support of our community when we've needed to. Um, uh, uh, you know, at least in terms of support for our community. And, you know, Stephanie asks really good questions, too. Um, uh, and I I do get to talk with her, and uh, you know, she's provided some good suggestions as well along the way and advice. I don't know where she's gonna be on uh in endorsing one way or or another either. Um, you know, uh, Kelly and Paula, uh, I've always had a civil relationship, and we have our disagreements. We can talk through it. Um, but I think, you know, for me, uh, you know, the importance here is making sure that we're following the processes. And my relationships are gonna be with people who are for transparency, people who are willing to uh listen and take input that may be different from their own and incorporate them. Uh, and those who are willing to make sure that we're checking the boxes and following the processes so that our community and our advisory boards are being listened to um when we're asking for their input, and it's not symbolic. So I I think that sort of speaks to how I work and the people who I I work with. And that's why, as an example, I'm, I'm endorsed by both Ted Lieu uh and by Sidney Camley, or both members of Congress who represent Culver City. Um, you know, because of my ability to work um with a diverse group of people from all sorts of backgrounds. And there are even folks who, you know, maybe uh to the left or the right, who who may, I may not, again, have complete agreement with them, but as we found in the Finance Advisory Committee, we were able to build consensus around issues, you know, by talking and listening to each other and finding out what's important and treating each other with that respect and uh and treating the community with respect.
All right, uh, thank you. And uh, now, now, Kristen, your turn.
Thank you. Um, so I think one of the nice things about myself is I've been in the district only a year. Um, I was a room parent. I volunteered weekly at Linwood House Cafeteria. I showed up for all the PTA volunteer events. Um, and I started watching the board meetings. But I, I don't have deep connections with current board members. I've chosen not to. I have met with Stephanie once. I thought it was the um, the right thing to do to reach out, and I reached out to Brian, um, but uh, had not heard back. Um, I did not reach out to Tristan. I um, I don't feel like I align with, with him. Um, and not in a negative way, just I, I, I don't quite understand his motivations. Um, but I, I see that the, the main goal is to be respectful with each other. Um, and I'm not seeking their endorsements. I think that the board has been dividing the community. Um, the two board members who are not up for, you know, who are not running again, but also the current board members who haven't spoken up. Um, and so obviously, there's challenges of being on the board um that I can't speak to and I'm not aware of, and so I don't want to necessarily judge them for entirely not speaking out. Maybe there's something else going on there that I, I don't, you know, only if you're on the board, you can experience. Um, but. But I've chosen to run this campaign. As, as, you know, as a mom who's invested in kids in the community and. Who is trying not to get involved with the divisiveness that has happened in the past. And that's part of the position of just being maybe, you know, as Andrew said, he's been here for six years. I've been here for a year, so I haven't been as involved with them. So I come with kind of a fresh perspective and. And I think ideas and I think that efforts that have been done over the past few years have. Have been all with good intentions. And I think the goal now is to make sure that when we do something with good intention, we actually have. The means to execute every single one of those effectively and in the right way. So. You know, long story short, I'm not, I have, I don't consider myself aligning necessarily with any of them. I come from a different background. And I just want to be able to work well and peacefully with them and respectfully and make progress for our students.
Well, thank you. Now, one of the challenges of running this is you realize you have to learn how to count to three. So I think I've done it properly. And so we're moving on to the next question. Then thank you for answers on that. I have a number of questions. I'm trying to synthesize them. They're about honors English. The removal of honors English was very controversial in the community. And the questions more or less are, how would you evaluate the success or failure? Of the removal of honors English and what sort of a timeline might you have for making a change if change was. Something that you thought was was a result of your evaluation. And we're going to do this in the order of first Kristen, then Lindsay and then Andrew. So Kristen Spotlight, back to you.
Sure. So when I first heard about the removal of honors, I think I maybe mentioned it to Lindsay. I said, but we're not removing varsity sports. And we're not removing auditions for the plays and the theaters. And in my mind, I think this is all the same. And hear me out. Our goal as the district is to make sure our students are reaching their full potential. If there is a student who is, you know, who's. Loves lacrosse and that's important, it's important to them to get better and to prove and compete at that level. That is important and that is something that I'm glad our district can provide. If there is a student who loves English. And that is what they want and that is where they want to excel and put their attention and they. I want that student also to reach their full potential. And so I I don't agree with having. With having different spaces within our district where we're saying it's okay to. Excel, it's okay to reach potential here and it's not okay here. And so I think that to me, I think we should be providing those opportunities for the students who identify. As someone that that's, you know, that's their identity, that's their core is. Is maybe academics in in that subject. And so I I would bring it back as soon as possible, but I with the caveat of, I know the intention of it was that we weren't necessarily having. The right diversity in our classes. And I think that there are both short term answers for that. And there are long term solutions for that. And both of those need to be addressed simultaneously. We need to work on our pipeline, starting elementary school. We need to work on. Those years, you know, in sixth grade and in ninth grade, when we're getting influx of new students. With counselors, with teachers of identifying students, you know, as. Going back twenty years, thinking about my my time in Avid, I was there to help students who were getting in the, you know, the. The from getting B minuses Bs from falling even lower and getting them up to B pluses A minus. I think there are. Interventions that exist and programs that exist that that work and that are effective that. Can be implemented without necessarily taking from the students who really are looking forward to pursuing. You know, their their career and their development in a certain subject, whether it's English, whether it's math or whether it's something else. And so. I'm all for whether, you know, it's controversial, I'm sorry, but that's, you know, that's my honest answer. I say that if the community doesn't agree, then that my job as someone on the board is to reflect the community. And my opinion is just my opinion. And if the community says, no, we really think that honors shouldn't exist, then I respect that and I will make. I will make sure that we find other opportunities for students who need, who feel like they're not getting their needs met. And find those in other ways and and make sure that we're reflecting the community values as a board and as a district. And in terms of bringing it back, I think that was second part of the question. I think that maybe is a kind of a longer path. To getting it back. I think that is a lot of conversations. It is understanding where the community, where the temperature is at this point in time. You know, with budgets, with student population, what what can we do? And again, and and bringing it back, I think. It can only be brought back at the same time that we're implementing other programs to make sure. That the original reason why it was removed is being addressed and solved for in other places.
Thank you. Next up to Lindsay.
Hey, yeah, this honors English question, this has certainly been a real discussion among the district, you know, for the last couple of years in particular and. You know, being as it was, I, you know, my son started in the fall of twenty twenty-two and I kind of entered the district while that honors conversation was happening. You know, very fiercely among the community. It wasn't something that with a then five year old, I completely understood, but I certainly have come to understand it a lot better over the last couple of years. You know, I think there there have been a lot of community members who have been asking for data. On, you know, what what the actual result of removing the honors classes, the English honors classes has been and, you know, what sort of effect that's had on the students. I suppose I could back up and say, you know, my understanding, you know, from a variety of different sources is that this was. In part, a teacher led effort. I certainly want to be supportive of our teachers in that regard. I think one of the things that they asked for. Was if, you know, honors classes are going to be removed and we're going to have everybody in sort of a general English ed class, we need to have smaller class sizes. And we need to have, you know, specific training for teachers on differentiating instruction. And that was not something that the district was. Able or willing to provide apparently. And I think, you know, there also were certain motivations, I think, of of board members to kind of avoid the. Blame for it and place the blame rather on teachers instead. And so that, you know, create a kind of a. A fraught situation between certain community members that were really upset about the removal of honors classes and then the teacher population. And that led to, you know, some. News articles, including in the Wall Street Journal and, you know, people from all over the country calling teachers and. You know, harassing them. And that was certainly not a good result for anybody in that situation. I think given the budget that we have right now, it doesn't look like we're going to be able to. Reduce our class sizes in such a way that we could even possibly make this work, even if we wanted to. My conversations with other folks, you know, who've been looking at this issue, they've actually analyzed a lot of the data and it's been showing that. You know, the the diversity concern in particular, there was this issue with respect to trying to make sure that students. Felt like they could be qualified for AP classes. And if, you know, you're tracking them too early on and putting them, you know, in the regular English versus honors English, those kids that were. So sort of stuck in the regular English classes wouldn't see themselves as AP material, for example. I think that we can address that a lot better with counseling on the the front end and making sure that. Our students are being identified and placed in, you know, classes that are appropriate. For their ability. And, you know, there are certainly issues with respect to children of color, especially Latino kids and black kids that. Are not necessarily guided towards those higher level courses. And I think we need to have some, you know, action in that respect. And trying to make sure that everybody, you know, opportunities are identified for everybody. And I think, I'm trying to think of what all the parts of this question were at this point. I think I'm addressing most of them though. I do, I do know though, however, one of the nice things is that it does seem at this point that the. Removal of further honors classes is off the table. You know, one of the things that the district has done is apply for UC certification of all of these various honors courses. So that's not something that I think. Anybody would be doing if there was some, you know, intention in the future to remove those honors classes and, you know, certainly from other disciplines. I know the science teachers are very opposed. To removing honor science classes, for example. So I think, you know, bringing them back needs to be a conversation between the community, the board and the teachers. And, you know, trying to, you know, come to some sort of solution that most people are going to be happy with. One of the things I've been saying a lot. As I've been talking to various groups is that not everybody's going to get what they want all the time, right? I mean, that's that's sort of the nature of trying to negotiate a solution to something. I can tell you that, you know, as a litigator that. Usually, you know, everybody's a little bit unhappy with whatever resolution and that usually tends to be the best one. But maybe we'll take it from, you know, a more positive approach and say, maybe everybody can be a little bit happy with where we end up in the future. So I certainly want to listen to the community and and make sure that we're reflecting. You know, the community's desires as well as making sure that our our teachers and staff are feeling appreciated and, you know, heard with respect to. This area where they are actually the professionals with respect to education and educating our kids. Thanks.
Thank you. And now Andrew.
Thank you. So to to build on what was said before. The whole idea behind this program was to get more students to apply for the AP programs. What was supposed to happen is they were supposed to make classes smaller. They were supposed to provide more support for. Students at risk, particularly black and brown students. Those are English learners, those sorts of of students. And very little of that happened. There was no follow through. And to blame the teachers for that is inappropriate. This was a. This was a shortcoming from the administration of not providing those follow ups. And a criticism, I think, within the. Board would be to say that we didn't have metrics to say, this is how we know it's going to work or it's not work. So far, the numbers for applications to. To AP have actually dropped as a result. And I think we've taken that as a lesson of the importance. And one of the reasons we have. Trust and issues and transparency issues here is that we haven't followed up and we said we're going to do things that we, you know, that we've laid out. So, you know, the question is, you know, can we revert it? Next year or the year after, what's the reasonable data and what are the metrics that we need to set that this is not working? And then, you know, and then bring it to what does. The only place where this. Detracking has even remotely worked was in the new Rochelle School District in New York. And it took years of investment to to make sure that, you know, to make sure that student populations, those were at risk. Brought their, you know, were able to bring their skill levels up and felt included and empowered. And I think that's a lesson for us that you don't make education better by taking things out. You make education better by challenging students and helping those students who need. And I, as a member of the LCAP Committee. Who has supported the Black Student Plan and who has been working in terms of. Programs to help our English learner students who've. Excuse me, fallen the farthest behind of everybody. I think these are some of the. Steps that we, you know, that we have to take if we're going to, you know, if we're really interested in improving and making sure that those. Students who have issues or don't, you know, with and don't have access. Or the the ability to be able to get into these programs, that we can at least give them that opportunity if they want to challenge themselves. Along those lines, I'd also like to talk a little bit about CTE as being important. Think about, according to the last report, I want to say like twenty-five to twenty-seven percent of students have taken CTE track pathways. Which is important because college readiness is important. Seventy percent of our high school students. You know, are meeting those high school requirements, but twenty for graduation to. To go to college, but twenty-five, twenty-six percent don't. And we want to make sure we have strong options for them too and working with our community colleges. And our labor unions to provide apprenticeship opportunities for those who have mechanical or kinetic intelligence. And that's where their gifts lie as well. But we're, you know, we, I think the bottom line is we really need to find. A review here and and look at a couple of important questions. One is, you know, how do we challenge students at each level? What's the best way in terms of empowering our students and making sure students. You know, feel safe and those who want to challenge themselves, we can and and provide the opportunities for them to flourish. But then we also need to ask ourselves, and this came up. In in a lot of my experience with walking in the communities, this is the issue that gets brought up probably the most. But, you know, why are our students leaving who are some of our most gifted? And what can, what can we do to keep them here in the district as well? Because they they help and students learn from each other. And the more that. We have the chance to, you know, have that community, the better off we all will be.
Thank you. Now we have our our last question. And we're going to give this to the candidates. The order, again, as randomly determined as I can, with just three. Is going to be first Christian, then Andrew, then Lindsay. And question is going to be. It's going to do this. First, I'm going to ask you. What is the first thing that you would change if you could when you were elected? And you can include in that answer a closing statement, because this will be our final word from each of you. So. How that. And you can take a second before you answer. But if there's something that you can do, what is the first thing you would you would want to change if you were elected? You can include your closing in that answer. And that first goes to you, to Kristen. I know that's a.
The first thing I want to change, I would say the the most important thing for me to spend my my attention and energy on. Is the bond and measure E and making sure that that is done well. I have real concern knowing that. There's three, you know, this is the first of three. And I feel like it's imperative that we do it well so that the community wants to vote for the second and third one. So like kind of without question, that is nothing I want to change. It's something I want to focus all my energy on and make sure it's done well and right. And to that end, you know. You know, I know a lot of, I don't know if I would have been the right board member. Ten years ago, four years ago, even during COVID, I have, you know, kindergarten, I guess, a first grader now and a preschooler. And I come from a diverse family. I I see. See all the students as little kids that are, you know, that I want to like collect and protect and. And that's just kind of how I walk through the world. And, you know. Andrew mentioned the support of the Jewish community. And I know we've had other, you know, during COVID, I know that our Asian communities didn't necessarily feel safe. And I think I I would really love, you know, aside from measure E and making sure that's done really well is to. Build back this place where we are a little bit more welcoming and accepting and repairing some of. The hurt and the damage from past board members and making sure that. Culturally, within the, you know, the teachers and the staff, within the student body, within our community, that there's a focus again on. Acceptance and making people feel emotionally safe, making people feel welcome. And so those are kind of like the two things that matter to me. There is also, I have a laundry list of other things that I would like to change in terms of operations that are small things, you know, efficiencies. And not wasting money and and doing things better and making sure that our timeline to hire is better. But it's measure E, so. Did I just thumbs down me or did I, sorry, that just popped up on the screen? If I touched something. But anyway, so that, you know, I really appreciate everyone's, you know, everyone's time here and your consideration. And I hope I've been able to explain that I, you know, I'm someone with a. With an MBA, with a master's in my planning, I care about how we're operating. I care about. Doing the work now so that in ten years we're functioning really well and all these other great ideas that people have and all these changes and maybe changes to our curriculum. Whatever we want to accomplish, we've laid the groundwork and done the work right now to make sure. That we can do so. And I think that takes a focus right now on patching some of the operational holes that we have at the district. That maybe haven't had the attention that they deserve over the last fifteen, twenty years. But thank you for your time and I will see you around the community.
And thank you for your time, Kristen Cruz. And now Andrew left.
Well, thank you. You know, this reminds me of. The one question that people dreaded, an exam question that I once saw, which is. You know, in a, do a pair, do an essay on the impact of Judeo-Christian values on Western civilization. Breed beef, be brief and concise. So. There's, there's a lot to to cover here, but I will say that my. My my priorities, I think, are in in three places and the things that I know we can do quickly. One is procurement reform, no more two-page contracts, making sure that we're really looking at how we're doing our outsourcing and. Not doing secret contracts, things like that. Making sure that our bond spending is being done in the classroom first and foremost. And then finally, making sure that we're restoring communication and trust. And I think if you look at my record of work in the community, I I have. Been able, I followed through and what I've done and sought to do. You know, when it came to the bond, I made clear that it was important to me that and. Cause I heard the teachers and the classified employees felt they weren't being listened to on this and that my. My final support would would be based on, you know, if they would step forward and. And 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 follow through and have these meetings with the teachers at each of the sites. And when they did that. And followed through, I made sure that that I not only supported the bond, I didn't just sign a letter. You know, I continued communicating and I walked and I followed up and actually made a difference in this stuff. And look, as you said. As Lindsay said, you know, people can agree to disagree. I understand some of the issues people had about some of the management issues. And those criticisms, some of them I think were well based. And when you're working with someone like me, you'll find. You know, as a transactional attorney, not a litigator, because this is not, this is not meant to be an oversight. Yes, there's oversight to it, but it's it it's done like as a trustee and all three of us have sort of that kind of experience. But I think that. As somebody who, you know, does this for a living and and knows how to, you know. put together and get people communicating with each other to get deals done and get people to understand each other. Uh, that's the way I can, I can be very helpful. And furthermore, you know, if I disagree with someone, I can tell them, I can disagree with them and stand up to them in a way. In, in which, you know, if we can learn from each other, that's great. Um, but they'll still be the ability to move forward in the future. Because, uh, what we've seen is the pendulum swinging back and forth has hurt all of us. And we, the students have suffered as a result and teachers have suffered as a result. So if you, like me, believe that we should put students before, um, politics, if you believe as the Culver City Federation of Teachers and a number of other, um, uh, folks who were involved in this, uh, in, you know, in education, including a, a, a number of former principals, uh, retired teachers, those who have been involved with education organizations, uh, as well as four former school board chairs and four former mayors. Uh, uh, that, that we can do better and that we can bring the focus back to, uh, back to our, uh, to making our district uh, improve and be better. But then I ask you to join our campaign, uh, and invite you to go check out lackmanforccusd.com where you can find where all, a lot of these positions are written out. Uh, and I put these together, talking with principals, educators, people and parents in the community. It's a community vision and I'm here to help and work with all of you. Uh, I know some people, uh, you know, there have been, you know, a couple of us have political backgrounds, but this is not a political career. Uh, if, if any of us wanted to go into politics for a career, um, we'd be in a different city. The, this district has not been that kind of a place. We're all here because we care about our community. We want to see our kids do better and we want to see, uh, an edu-, uh, an educational, uh, uh, atmosphere where we're focused on our students. So thank you very much and look forward, I hope I can have all of your support as a lifetime member of this club and someone who has spent time not only at events, but helping procure resources, uh, such as the, the stand-up that you saw with Biden and, uh, and Harris and other things for this club. I, I appreciate all of you giving me the time. I appreciate Eric, uh, Daryl and all of you having us here today and would love to have your support for school board.
Thank you, uh, Andrew Lockman. And, uh, finally, we have Lindsay Carlson.
Okay. All right. Thanks so much, uh, again, for this opportunity. I'll try to be fairly brief since, um, coming up on eight o'clock your time, 10 o'clock my time. So the, the first thing that, uh, you asked about was what would I change, uh, as a school board member? And I think, um, the answer to that really is the relationship between the community, the educators, district staff and the board. You know, it is very frayed at this point, um, you know, beyond what I expected before I started getting involved in district, uh, issues. Um, I want more people to be inspired and I want them to participate in the district. Uh, I want to recruit people to some of these committees, you know, we have so many advisory committees. You know, the, from everything from the bond oversight committee to, you know, CBAC, uh, Citizens Budget Advisory Committee, to the Measure K Committee, to, you know, Black Families Advisory Council. Now, there's been some talk about establishing other advisory councils that are sort of, you know, interest or community-based. So like Hispanic families or Latino families advisory council. Um, you know, even a Jewish families advisory council, I think that's even been, you know, discussed in, you know, recent months in particular, as we've had some issues in the district, uh, around antisemitism from board members. You know, I'd like to bring these folks to the board, have them talk about their work. Few weeks ago, actually, maybe it's a month now, there was a meeting where, you know, CBAC gave their annual report. Mar Bushanti got up and talked and there were maybe a couple of questions from board members, but, you know, I went back, I looked at the tape, I timed it. They got seven minutes of that meeting. And then at the same meeting, the board members spent 54 minutes in a conversation about how they should revise their policies and who should become the vice president of the board and who should become the clerk and how all that should work. And, you know, I mean, it was very, very clear that they were all sort of thinking about their positions and their titles. And that, you know, to me is not, you know, is one of the things Kelly Kent has come to start talking about is student-centered work, right? I mean, it's not student-centered when you're just talking about individual board members, positions and careers. We really should be focusing on the students and also the business of the district, which does involve the students. And it also involves, you know, our teachers and staff and district administrators and all these other things that make a district function. So, you know, my dad, actually, I think, you know, Andrew mentioned, some of us come from a political background. I mean, I've never worked in politics and I've been sort of a, an outsider the whole time. You know, kind of doing this as a side hustle, establishing a democratic club and being on finance committees. I was on Hillary Clinton's National Finance Committee, have done some fundraising for Kamala Harris and Amy Klobuchar. I mean, as you can tell, there's a little bit of a theme going on there. I've, I've generally invested a lot in feminist candidates, although I've also supported, um, some men and some male allies and feminists as well. You know, my dad is actually a state senator here in Minnesota, so I actually know sort of secondhand what it's like to run for office. I've seen it ever since I was 24 years old. Um, and I certainly wasn't intending that for myself. I wasn't intending to run for this position. I wasn't intending to run for, um, anything at all. Um, I really just enjoy being behind the scenes and actually helping other people win. I don't intend to run for anything else after this. I have no ambitions for public office beyond the school board. I actually really like my job and, uh, I don't like attention. Actually joke with my family all the time that I was even uncomfortable at my own wedding because so much of the focus there was on me. It was very uncomfortable for me. But I'm just actually here to do the job to help build a bench of future school board members and to pass the torch when time, when the time is right. You know, I really want to just bring this back, you know, to a place where people feel comfortable to discuss things, to disagree with each other sometimes, you know, and see the humanity in each other, um, beyond their very specific political positions. And, you know, where parents, community members are inspired and, and want to be involved. So that, that is essentially it for me. I gave kind of a clopening, I guess, at the beginning of this, so I don't really have a whole lot more to say, but, you know, thank you all again for the opportunity. And, um, you know, I'm happy to talk to anybody anytime and you can certainly, you know, find me online as well. I also have a website, carlsonforccusd.com, um, you can look me up there. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Lindsay Carlson. And thank you, by the way, to all the candidates for what I think has been an amazing conversation. You know, when you decide to have a conversation that you're going to ask candidate, uh, questions from the chat and basically you have no rules on time, you're opening yourself up for all kinds of mayhem. And instead, we've had an amazing civilized, thoughtful conversation. I've certainly learned things. So, uh, just a hand to all the candidates for doing a terrific job for democracy at a time when we all need it. So that's everybody here. And I know there's additional questions that kept coming in the chat. And, you know, we're not going to be here till 11:00 in the morning asking all those and then I get shot by these candidates. That's not good either. Uh, not just in the ear, but they do better. So, uh, rather than all that, um, ask the candidates, we'll have a 48-hour vote starting tomorrow morning as soon as the ballots come out. You want to ask questions? They tend to be responsive, so go for it. And, uh, uh, with that being said, I want to turn it over to Eric Rudin, our, uh, fearless president for a few words.
Thank you, Daryl. Fearless, I don't think that's anything I've ever been called, but, uh, thank you very much. And to echo what Daryl said, tonight was just an amazing evening. It was a great chat. While I don't know if school board meetings will get shorter, uh, when we get the right people elected, I think that they will get better. Uh, when we get the right people elected, as you heard tonight, uh, I think we're going to get to be proud of whoever it is we endorse. Again, they're all three CCDU members, so I am very looking forward to getting out there to work, uh, on the, on the candidates we do endorse. And I do want to give a quick little shout out, uh, to our three endorsed city council candidates who are here. Even though they don't, they're not involved in the school board. Council member Vera, uh, Denise Renteria and Janine Wozniewski-Stalen have been here throughout. And I think that just kind of goes to show you what kind of candidates we've endorsed. They really care about our community, even though that's a part that they won't be governing. And I think you could tell by the level of preparedness of all three of our candidates here tonight, uh, that they care about our community too and that they want to listen and engage. Uh, so that's going to be a nice new experience for us, uh, but we have to do the work for them. The second we have our endorsements filled, I really hope we'll all get behind who we endorse. Uh, with that, I think we are good to go. Uh, I also want to say congratulations to our community. We've had over 50 people this entire time, which for a special meeting on a Monday night is pretty darn impressive. So thank you to you, our community, as always. So with that, let us end, let's adjourn. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Uh, well, not quite yet because we have something.